Judy Spitznoff, Stevensburg, Lucas.
We have trouble for that thing.
Made your labor good, ran by the house for half an hour, went to get her some hot dogs, that's what she wanted. I had about thirty, I thought I'll be here an hour and a half, two or three hours later.
They're getting anywhere, they're getting anywhere, they're trying to make the U-turn.
Eleven thirty. It looked like golf out in Saturday morning. At my point, I think. Judy Spitznoff, Stevensburg, Lucas.
We have trouble for that thing.
Made your labor good, ran by the house for half an hour, went to get her some hot dogs, that's what she wanted. I had about thirty, I thought I'll be here an hour and a half, two or three hours later.
They're getting anywhere, they're getting anywhere, they're trying to make the U-turn.
Eleven thirty.
I mean, that's too narrow for even double vehicles sometimes, depending on the vehicles.
Me? Three?
Three.
Yeah, I'm glad it's her, man, it's one on hers.
Yeah, it's not fun. So why are the houses gone over there? Did I miss that?
On the point?
That's where they're building a gas station.
Gas station.
Liquor store. It'll take no longer than what originally started out with.
They're still in negotiations.
That's where the gas line got.
Well, it started out something, and then they said, hey, we can throw some gas pumps in there while we're building.
They went gas slash cell storage, slash gas stations, slash tire storage.
What kind of gas station? Like BP? They didn't know.
Apparently you'd buy diesel.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Rick, we just said, just sort of had a diesel pump, right?
Original family that bought it. Everything back up, sold it to another group, they were the ones that planned it, now they're now taking them to the site. Yeah, they got her cleared out, that's for sure.
Yeah, it was just gone.
They were chewing up.
Or maybe I'm very unobservant.
They were chewing up ahead of today.
Yeah.
Saw the, the claws going after it when we went, we went down Walton Road.
Well, Aaron, we brought that up, and Aaron said that they've had recent discussions on the zoning and all, whatever, planning or whatever, you know, so.
Now we can use another gas station, full competition.
Sure.
And especially if it's got diesel.
At least they're on opposite end, yeah.
They're competing with theirself out there at the plant, you know, the bulk plant?
Oh, yeah.
I bought, uh, that ninety octane alcohol-free juice for the car, um, you know, you got a sports car, you gotta feed it.
John Thomas, he worked out with the plants. He's one of our laborers.
Happy laborers.
The Sam's Club.
Him and Jake usually run around together.
Sam's Club was three seventeen, it was three oh nine out there.
His, um, his grandpa's Clyde.
Takes a little labor.
Oh, right, his Clyde.
His, his father's passed away with Alzheimer's.
You have to follow the instructions.
He used to live in.
Kathy and Clyde are in church now, so.
It works, though. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's, uh, seven o'clock, if everybody please stand, face the flag, and say we read the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, uh, we'll now call the August fourth town hall meeting to order. Uh, all the board members are present, our attorney, our police chief is present, uh, our treasurer clerk is present, uh, at the moment, our town manager is on job site, taking care of a situation that popped up, and he will be here with us presently. Need everybody pleased to, if you would, look over the minutes, and have any changes you wish to make, or comments you wish to make. If not, then I ask somebody make a motion to approve minutes as they are.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, I would like to add a second, please.
A second?
Any second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, we will now have independent reports. Mr. Hatton?
You're up first. Good. Evening. All right, we've got the, uh, synopsis of the last month in front of you. I guess a couple things, I did take four days vacation, wife went to Jamaica, so I stayed home and worked on cars. So I've got ten days left, uh, two suicide interventions, had court on a drug case, the guy thought he won the jury trial, but he, he actually saw the facts of the case, he pled guilty. I've been going down a couple times a week helping Galveston with their traffic mess around that bridge construction. If you've been down that way, you know that Maple Street or nine fifty east is just, uh, it's just been tearing up, those people down there, I feel sorry so far, I'm so sorry for them. So I went down and gave Randy Galveston two, I give him a hand a couple hours, two or three times a week. The semis get down there and try to make U-turns and tear the yards all up, and get stuck in the mud, and, uh, and then they're, most of them are off-state semi drivers, they wanna get snippy with the deputy, they, you know. They say they don't see the detour signs, well, I start taking pictures of all the detour signs, now when they say that, I get my phone out, and I say, yo, there's a big detour sign right there, two eighteen thirty-five, says detour, there's, there's another one out here at Lincoln, but, as you get closer, there's more signs. And so, you know, they're just trying to cut five minutes off their route, but they're making life down there for people miserable. And that's not gonna be completed till October.
What all are they doing there?
They're putting a new bridge in.
The whole bridge, okay.
I would've thought they put a couple culvers in, but no, they're building a complete bridge. So if anybody sees me down there, that's, that's why I'm going down here for them. Something I wanna read you, I got a letter from a guy who, uh, "Two years ago, I turned cocaine use. The night I was arrested, I was living my life due to drugs. I parked my truck in Walton on the side of the road, I was deciding whether to go home or end my life." This guy had guns, right? Officer Hatton pulled up behind me with the lights on, I was in terrible shape. He searched my truck and found drugs in my guns and took me to jail. He gave my life that night a new chance, he gave me a new chance at life that night, for this, I praise God. I know I did wrong, I almost destroyed myself, I now love my life being clean and with God. So when you get those kind of notes from somebody.
This is a local person?
He's a local guy, yeah. And I didn't realize he was suicidal, and Matt didn't realize he was suicidal until, until he got this letter, so.
I'm glad you were there for him.
So even in the darkest moments, sometimes the light does, does shine through, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
At least you can feel good about what you do sometimes.
But that's all I've got.
No, it's not.
Hmm?
No, it's not.
Yeah, let's talk about, uh, the, uh, academy.
Oh, wait, we gotta straighten that, we're good.
Oh, yeah.
You know, Mike's messed up the academy, and I talked to him a while ago, and he's number one in his class support, he's got ninety-eight percent on all his test scores.
How many more were you seeing down there?
Uh, eight. He did real good, and he's running into some of the guys down there that I know, 'cause I, uh, been around all this long. So, you'll get it done, you won't have any trouble.
Another question, we were talking earlier about that new, uh, laptop or computer you needed. Have you sent me out, you were gonna look up to see what brand you were going?
Well, Mike's say wanted it.
HP.
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 Well, you guys just get it, you just, whatever you get.
Yeah, I just, with the last meeting, we, I said, just get ahold of me and we can pick out something, get it ordered.
We'll get it done this week.
If you need the upgrade anyway.
Oh, yeah.
And that way we can get everything.
I got your nothing on thirty minutes to sit back, if I smoked, I'd have two cigarettes by the time I get warmed up.
Smoke a cigarette, it'll be ten minutes.
That's what I was gonna ask, with the hot rod sitting out here, are we having problems getting up to speed in our police car, or are we gonna use the hot rod?
Is that yours?
All right, anybody have any questions for them? All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tony.
Rick, sir. You got a little problem, Rick, you're down there.
Well, when I went down there, 'cause I went down to, it's where they're dirtin' house now. And the guy ran the Maco, or excavator, he was Hispanic, good guy. I said, are you sure that gas is unhooked? He, oh, yeah, it was, they've hit it. 'Cause I got emergency locate when I was just coming in, so I went down there, NIPSCO, they said they might be out there ten, eleven o'clock, just trying to find excavator, bringing the guy to dig it and cap it, so.
That late? That long?
Oh, yeah, you can smell it.
Yeah, but they don't wear.
Well, what's that?
I love Brian says, one of the walls that went down, looks like it's sitting right on.
Yeah, it is, where the meter, or.
They'll have to move that, well, they can.
No, they just, right at the edge of the street.
Oh, okay.
Right close to, I showed them where my sewer was, they just dig down, find it, terminate it, yeah. But, you know, they gotta get the locate, guy has to come, and then they dig, and, yeah, I just was, um, the edge of town, and I got the emergency locate, and when they said the address, I thought, huh, I know what they've done, they've hit something, so, but, you know. Anyway, okay, um, if you look at the, the water, when I say rebuilt a chlor- uh, rebuilt chlorine ductor, I did that myself, 'cause they give me the parts. But we still had problems in the booster pump there, now, um, I can't remember looking through the invoice, but this is one of the things that, and I'm gonna bring it up, and, and I understand you don't wanna hear about rates, but I'm telling you, there's a lot of old stuff that's gonna have to be replaced. That right there was three grand, just to give you an idea, okay, so, um, but it's also eleven years old and got a bunch of hours on, it's a three-phase pump, so it's just one of those things that there's a lot of old stuff that needs to be upgraded, and, you know, when I sat on the board, we spent two point nine million to replace water mains, which, you know, didn't include, you know, the meters and things like that, so there's still a lot of old stuff in the infrastructure. But these wells were put in in the fifties, so, some of it's got electrical that needs to be upgraded, and that's what Ken's working on, the planning grant, just so you can kinda, and I talked to Ken, and Ken said he can help us go through and just kinda figure, but there's just a lot of things that's gonna have to happen, and it's just like when we do our trash, if you look at that trash thing from Waste Management, it's double what it was ten years ago, our water bill isn't double. But the stuff we gotta pay for has, I mean, like, I, I just, I didn't put it on here, but PFOS is something they made us start this year, twice a year. I gotta do it, it's six hundred dollars each time. Got to test it.
State?
Yeah, I D M says you gotta test for P, we don't have it, thank goodness, but they're, they're dictating you have to do it, well, you know, the other, other ones I just did, I sent you the invoice, I think they were five or six hundred, so it's like, it's the unknowns that happen that just cost a lot of money.
So will you go over the planning within, could you kinda dictate?
Well, that's what.
This is where we need to start.
See, the, the only thing that, the only thing we can get a grant for is water, because you can only do grants every five years. We just did sewer, which was seven hundred and fifty thousand, we did storm, which was four hundred. Water, we haven't, in fact, as I talked to Ken, when we did that, we got, let's say it was one point nine million dollars from, it wasn't a grant from Okra, that actually came from, um, what is it, the Finance Authority?
F F F S A?
No, it's, it actually was the state, because they had money they had to get rid of, which we still, now, the nice thing in talking with Ken, and I know this, 'cause we do it at the school, where we got bonds, and all bonds are dead, okay, and if you see on there, we got bonds for water and sewer, but we can actually do what they call a wraparound bond, and what that means is you, you get the money, you do your project, but you don't start paying on it, so that one pays off. Like our sewer right now, it, I think, is done in four years, I think, which I wasn't around at the start of it, but.
Twenty thirty?
Something like that, twenty nine, twenty nine or thirty, so I mean, it's like, you know, but water is the only thing we could get a grant for right now, from Okra, there is other, you know, other avenues, but that's just something, I just wanna give you a little bad news, but, you know, there's just a lot of, and I know nobody wants to pay more, I get that, but it's just the cost of doing everything is gone.
Well, I, I guess my point was, say we're, we're drawing up this plan, and we can kinda dictate what needs to be hit first, and what.
Well, and that's where, yeah, we need to probably do water first, only 'cause we can apply and hopefully get seven hundred thousand, but we still gotta come up with, you know, twenty percent, yeah, so even if it's a seven hundred thousand, that's another hundred and forty, you gotta come up with.
Do we need to do wiring first, and upgrading panels and all?
Well, now you just do that as a bulk, and which, like, the, the water tower, for example, they're gonna start digging us on it, it's eleven years old, it's gonna need to be painted. Um, you know, I still got some ductile iron, we still got old wiring at this well, this well I already did, I did that one. But that one needs to be upgraded, there's still some ductile, I always worry about it, comes right out of the building, goes out two hundred feet, and it's tied into plastic. But, you know, that's gonna be some expense to do, but that's just something that's in the radar, that, hey, you know, preventive wise, put in in fifty-five, so you calculated out, it's, it's got age on it.
Now, will the utility study help with figuring any of that?
It don't necessarily help with it, it just says, this is what we probably should focus on.
Okay.
And being the only one, we can get a true grant for is water, I would just, being we're a small utility, that's the one I would probably look at first, only 'cause if you can get seven hundred thousand, you know, up to that, I mean, hopefully it don't cost that much to do what we need to do.
Is that Ken's doing, working on?
Yeah, that's where, that's where we got that grant.
Is the engineer that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, so, back on this, but, you know, just to let you know, that booster pump, it's just expensive, but it's, it overrides and makes the chlorine deduction for sanitation, you gotta have it. There ain't no way to fan its butts about it. Um, rest of this is minor. Um, the four hundred North Gretchen, that is at the corner of Gretchen and Howard Street, and back in the day, whenever you had the old-fashioned shut-off and it wouldn't work, well, they made a system that would go into place of the meter, which was called a yoke, that would come up, and you had a good shut-off, well, that's not the way to fix it, it's a way to band-aid it till you got time to dig it up. So that's what we did, we dug it up and just got rid of that, just because it started leaking, and I said, you know, it's, it's like the old, old valve. You know, nothing against Leroy or whatever, but it's like, hey, let's put this in, you know, or whoever, I don't know. But, you know, that's just one of those things, we have started flushing hydrants, I did talk with Ken, and that's part of the study, that we'll, we'll do part of that, and in fact, we'll exercise valves, I guess part of that grant will pay for an exerciser, so that, I always just try to do them every year, just because when you need shut-off water, and you find out it's full of gravel, you gotta suck it out before you shut it off, so. Um, the TTHM H eighty-fives, those are the byproducts of chlorine sanitation, and we gotta test that every July by I D M standards, and we did that, and we were fine, so that's just another one of those tests you gotta do. The reeds of the sewer plant, that's the one biggie, that's where we put all our waste, which most, most, uh, sewage plants, they put it in a dumpster, pay to get rid of it, where this, the reed does it, but we cleaned two of them, but we really need to upgrade and clean those here and in the near future. It's just another one of those things that would, will be on the study that is gonna need to be addressed. Michelle Court, we repaired a sewer, that was, um, that was the doing of, of NIPSCO, but they basically fixed it, we got the stuff, I just make sure they did it right. Uh, two oh five North Days, Davis is that last new house that E S C did, and we got that sewer hooked up in the water, so that'll be another, hopefully paying customer, I think it's, there's already people interested in buying it, so, um, and then, you know, that white strain is just routine maintenance. The sound panels, um, the boys got them in, and if you get a chance, the community center's a lot quieter than it was, and they're still, they're still, what the recommendation, I think I got sixteen left, I know mine brought up, maybe come winter time, we'll figure out how we can drop them from the ceiling. 'Cause those actually go on, but almost like, kinda looks like a plaque you put on, it's got a bunch of sticklers, and it just, that's how it goes on. But we'll have to do something to drop it from the ceiling, but, you know, we'll get them used up, but anyhow, it made remarkable.
How many is up there now?
Forty. Yeah, so, yeah, I did a great dis- uh.
I mean, if you guys wanna see it this evening, we can walk over there.
I'm not walking, you know, but you guys can, yeah, but anyway.
Been an ass, we haven't been working.
The back door, I, I come, I had, uh, E S C come to repair it, well, then it broke again, and I got looking, and I know what's happened, if you look at the eaves trough above that back door, kids have got up on that, and it broke it off internally. And you'll see where the eaves troughs, I don't, what the hell they're getting up there for, have no clue, in a way, get in the building. But they've used that, got up, grabbed a hold, and swung themselves up there. I have no clue when it happened, but at some point, so that's, them parts are ordered, um.
Got a camera facing the back, don't you?
It does, you don't know when it happened, you'd have to look through for months, 'cause I don't.
I gotta take months, I've been looking a lot.
What, if you're bored with?
Come on up and look through the footage.
Um, and then, uh, Jason Young's building a house at Church and Kizzle, and we've got the street cut, so we can get ready to run his water and sewer in. And then the rest of it's just the brush, which, that's just, uh, they just log it down, how many, that's truckloads, and new tires on the GMC, 'cause that, it had issues.
Well, the GMC in, uh, you got it on two, two trucks got me.
Well, just that one day, the tire was flat, and Mike and I went in, and he dropped it off, and then.
No, they cut the sides, so it was ruined.
Yeah.
And then what hap- and then he got a bad sensor, and I said, well, who'll be replacing these soon, I didn't think it'd be the next week.
Yeah.
You jinxed it, it's all your fault.
Yeah, they got, they popped another tire.
So, but other than that, everything's really been going pretty well, I mean, there's no, I don't have any complaints, it's just, things just happen, system gets old, but it's a lot better than it was twelve years ago, how's that?
You're thinking of a percentage increase, or what, and when?
Uh, that's something that Ken, 'cause, um, whenever, if you look at, I don't think I've brought, the part that bothers me is, I don't know, I didn't have them, I was going through them with her. I always monitor the water in the sewer, which right now, our revenue's down on both, I think it was twenty-two thousand, but it's primarily because the school's been out. Now they'll fire up, but if you look, we were spending more than, than we were having come in. Well, and I know we still have a buffer, but, you know, it's just a case of, none of this stuff is cheap, as we all know, so, that's just something that Ken said we'd work with it, and that'd be part of the study, so that, that's good, so.
All right, so you're gonna do a study first?
Well, he's gonna work on it, 'cause he can get all of, all the numbers are reported I D M monthly. And that's one of the things, even if you go to, uh, S R F, that's who we gotta grant the state revolving fund, they monitor, and they just, you know, when I sat on the board with the water, they made us raise the rates where they loaned us money, didn't have a choice. So, you know, they just said, you can't, you can't function at this phase. And then with, you know, with her and her budget, and what the state, and in the same way with the schools, the state, it's almost like they're not letting you know what they're gonna do. And I know what they're gonna do, they just put more burden on, the schools will do that for each community and town, so, then in turn, it just comes to customers, just because that's how they operate.
That would cut taxes, right?
Yeah, that way they can cut taxes.
Down to the local.
Yeah. So.
Well, thank you for the good news.
That's, that's basically it.
Anybody have any questions?
Any idea when they're like, has he started on that?
We just, we just met with him this week, 'cause he had to go through and do paperwork with Stephen Ray, and, um, so now it's all official, you know, just.
We have all the contracts that need permission to sign to.
And hopefully, and hopefully, you know, and that's, this is me thinking outside the box, but hopefully one of these companies come in and give us a cheaper price on trash, so even if he did up at a dollar, you know what I mean? But if the trash goes down, it wouldn't impact, 'cause I mean, I know, my family all live here, I mean, it's, I don't wanna see them have to pay more, but I also want them to get good quality water, so.
Uh, that is to go back to those towns and neighborhoods, or fixed income.
Oh, yeah, yeah, my mom's like that, I understand.
Yeah, you know, just even supplement up a little bit, you're gonna hear it.
Yeah, that's right.
We're not happy, but. Officer, that is it. Thank you very much. All right, our clerk treasurer, Melanie, if you'd.
Well, I have a few things.
Okay.
Um, the utility study that he was talking about, um, we did, I mean, I guess I can go over it, we did get our contract signed with the state that Vincent had looked over and signed, um, and that was basically just for the planning thing, that we will receive a, we're awarded a grant, uh, for eighty-seven thousand for this planning study. And then we just have a contract with our grant writer and then Ken, since we hired him as our contractor, since he was the only bid, or the lowest bid, how, however, but I just needed to get your approval to sign both of these contracts as well. Just saying that we're moving forward, doing the utility, or planning utility study, uh, it was a planning utility study. Um, and we're using N C I R P C, who we, we use to write all of our grants, and then Ken was the engineer we decided to roll with. So, I'm, he's better at all of the details of the planning grant than I, but you guys are welcome to review all of them, and then if you would like to sign.
Any questions, or, Mark, a comment, or additions? All right, motion to put Ken to work. Motion to sign for our contract here. Okay, I have a motion to second, please.
A second?
Any seconds, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. That a little bit. All right, thank you very much. Okay.
One of them will have to be signed by everybody, the grant writer's contract, N C I R.
Okay.
I also have, um, so, over the years, our ordinances have gotten a little unorganized, I mean, due to change of hands, due to sicknesses, and, um, Jenely and I are having a hard time getting all of them organized together. So in your packets, I had, um, an email with a Joe McDonahue, who was recommended by Ken, uh, it's a company that does this on a regular basis. They come through, they organize ordinances, they get them digitized, uh, they just all around, like, review everything, and they said that their price of that kind of a project would be about four thousand eight hundred dollars, and that includes legal research, and can be spread over a two-year budget period. Which we could honestly pull it out of our town improvements, which is under casino and riverboats, and we would be able to do it, but it would also clean up our ordinances, so it would be easier to find things, and it would be digitized already, so we wouldn't have to go through and scan each and every.
So that includes the digital library?
Yes, every.
Unclear when I was reading through that, how much that included, or how much.
Yes, well, they would come and grab up all of our ordinances, go through everything, get everything organized in a book for us, and then get everything scanned into where it would be in a file, or even on, on both of our computers, so we could print them off, or easier to print them off on a little code, or not, not print them on a code, but like a little, uh, USB. So, that way we don't have to print, like, a hundred and some pages every.
Everybody should have to have a paper copy, and you should be able to look at it on the screen here.
But I mean, we haven't had anybody come in in a while and ask for your entire ordinance book, so, we, you know, it hasn't been too time-consuming, but it'd be nice to be able to just go to the file, transfer over.
Yeah, I can top of it, too, but anyway.
And it would be nice to have everything organized, and I mean, no fault, I mean, no fault from anybody that's ever worked here, it just, sometimes it gets overwhelming, and when you switch hands, the way we've kinda had a lot of catastrophic events happen in twenty-one, um, it got a little messy, to say the least. Um, but town hall, I mean, it would be nice to have a professional service come through and, um, kind of straighten everything out. But Jenely did reach out to him, you can see the response that he got, um.
Well, he says, he says he can stretch it out over two years, is that something you're reading about here?
It's a two-year budgeting period.
So that'd be, you said it's what, four grand?
Yeah.
Four years, two plus or five.
Two grand, twenty-four.
We've got the money, she's already sitting there.
Yeah.
Well, and they're familiar with, uh, this kind of business, so they already know the ropes of everything, and, I mean, their terminology even said can spread over a two-year budgeted period, so, that would be nice.
Who else did they do, locally?
Well, it, it was just, Ken recommended this guy, and said he did an amazing job, Green Town, rude, uh.
Yeah, we got a lot of.
Uh, ordinance, ordinance codification services.
Personally, I would vote to move forward with it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to make it forward with it.
Budget it by the year?
Yeah, I think budget it two years.
Over my marriage.
I make a, well, whatever you guys think, but I make a motion if they take it up to two years, that would be easy, I'll make a motion to move forward, budget for two years.
All right, we have a motion to go forward with this, and budget it over a two-year period?
Yeah, budget it for two years.
Okay.
Uh, second, you have a second, anybody have any questions or remarks on? All right.
We've talked about it a couple times over the years.
At one time, you threw it out, figured like thirty thousand. I remember that.
Yeah, if we hired, um, Bigotilly.
That was.
That, that made my heart. My heart sank when you, when she said that, I was like, ooh. We can follow that now, okay.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, motion is passed.
Okay. Um, and then I put on the agenda, the trash bids, but that was more or less just, just so you guys were aware of, I did reach out to all the, the four big trash companies. I did reach out to all the, the four big trash companies. I haven't heard anything more, but the pre-bid meeting is August 6th, so Wednesday at 10:00. And, um, then they'll be able to ask questions. Rick's gonna be there and we can have two council members come. So if you don't wanna come, don't feel obligated at all, but just, just so you can sit in on.
No.
I said, we can have two. So if you don't want to come, then you don't have, don't feel obligated. Cause then it's a public meeting if more than two council members come.
It is a public meeting.
Well, I didn't figure you two would be. I don't blame you, but I just more or less wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it, just so you were in the loop with it. And then, um, at our October 6th meeting will be when we open the bids. So they'll have to turn them in by 4:00 PM on October 6th and I'll stamp them as they come in and, um, and then we'll start the bid or start the public hearing with that, but we're gonna have a very busy meeting, a meeting that, that month. Cause we'll have our budget adoption, uh, meeting that time too.
Well, we're talking about trash. Whatever happened with the, uh, lot of trash left over from being picked up, they didn't pick up, he said we're gonna reach out to see what, what they could do, whatever happened with them.
Well, a lot of it got picked up.
No, all that stuff's gone.
Uh huh.
But you don't know, they didn't charge us extra that you don't know?
No, 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 they didn't charge us extra. Um, I, we basically just complained to Todd and Todd took care of it. But then Todd's our regular trash guy and he was having some major health issues, so he hasn't been picking up the last couple weeks. So if you notice any issues, please call us and let us know and then we'll reach out to the next man up. But.
Okay, I was wondering, cause you had said you'd call him, but you did go and said it cost extra.
Well, it shouldn't have cost it extra, but.
Well.
But you never know. No, they were correct. You just never know.
They didn't wrap this stuff.
I understand all that, yeah.
And then just, I'll go ahead and cover the budget too. Um, this was more or less, I met with our budget rep on the 14th of July and, um, she just transferred everything over. Uh, she said, our, due to not really knowing what the coming years are gonna be able to fund with taxes, cause we've had a lot of changes in the states. She said, just try to minimize spending for now. Um, I know that just contradicts about the organi, or the organization of our ordinances, but she said, it's just, it's kind of unknown. So she's like, our budget's fine, but just if we can start cutting back in the general fund, we probably should do that for a little while. But what, what we are needing at the moment, we have funds for it. I just, we're, I'm just gonna have to go through and reevaluate something. But our, uh, public hearing will be September 8th and then our adoption meeting will be October 6th. So if you guys can make sure those two, those, those will be important. I mean, if I can't make it, I understand. But that's all I've got.
Anybody have any questions? Have they ever had a chance to look over the budget for the bills, I should say?
Finances.
Any questions or any remarks or something they want to change on or add to?
Motion to pay the bill.
I have a motion to pay the bills. Please have a second. Five seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So passed. Did you bring in your water bill, sweet one?
It's ridiculous. Didn't they just go up another hundred dollars?
This month, I just got one, uh, 187. Now that includes trash water and.
I mean gallons.
I think last month it was like 300.
300? What are you guys doing?
Nothing.
You gotta be doing something.
Taking a shower or something, I don't know.
Oh, you're like my wife.
No, children. But either way, yeah, I'll bring them.
I don't say, I know when I did plumbing down there, one guy, now this has been eight years ago, it was 108 dollars and he used zero gallons. Because they said that we don't have, we've got a minimum, but it's zero gallons, but it's not, theirs was 108 dollars for zero gallons. It includes 2500 is what it does.
My house behind us that we don't live in or use, it's 99 dollars and 60 cents a month and we don't.
You don't do trash or nothing, I should.
We have, we have the trash, but that's separate because I called in, no, maybe it's 15 dollars, but then we're still paying the.
Well, it's less than what it was, cause once his name had one over by the church and this was, he showed me 100. He had stacked up 106 bucks and he used zero gallons for like 10 months, but his house is for sale. He just left it on in case they wanted to use it.
Not good.
Well, and it's just the state putting all the burden on.
Local.
Yeah, whether it's the school or.
Yeah, it's the hand me down.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, they moved somewhere else. They put the same problem.
Yeah, but it's a small community.
Unless they go out in the country.
Well, Logan sports, I can't remember what I just paid for the wastewater for.
Wastewater is crazy there.
It's for the small, cause I'm in a partial building, so just a small amount for.
75, I think, isn't it, for stormwater for the small?
More than that. I think it's 100. I'll, I'll bring that too.
But there's, yeah, there's, but they, they got a bond for 30 million when they ran those big, but IDIM made them do it because, and that's, hopefully we won't ever get to that because of a slip line, but that's, that's what they made them do.
Oh, you know what?
But yeah, it's, it's like, uh, it's getting like that everywhere. They dictate what they're wanting to do and make you do.
I think I just put my water bill in here today, cause I.
He's hoping that we feel sorry for you and make a collection.
Yeah.
You may set you up a good funding.
Okay, so listen to these ones, but yeah, there you go. What house are you on?
I feel bad. Mine's 251 up here.
And there's the house.
Use 5500 or 60 gallons.
For your house or your business?
The both of them together. But the car wash uses a lot less than my one.
I was trying to figure out if I could pull my RV up close to them to your car wash, if I could see the front, but the front is so.
It's outside. He's got.
You can get ahold of me and we can put 50 foot extra hose on there. He can go all over the place. Just pull it out from there. There we go.
Oh, I take it. Cause that, you know, there's, you can attach to your hose, it's got a battery and everything and then increase the pressure of your hose. I asked Molly, do you think that'd work for the RV? He goes, no. Have you ever seen the commercial? I've even. I said, well, I was looking at it, cause you know, it's got like almost a 14 foot clearance, so can't, definitely can't pull it in. And I was thinking if I could just at least get the front.
Okay, we will, uh, open the floor to anybody who steps up to.
Red school buses and everything else over there.
She ran off.
And what I'll need you to do is.
Her list was gonna show that my name is Dean McPhlossy, 8224 South County Road 1,000 East, Indiana. And I think you can get your motorhome in there if you drive. It's really, really fast.
Mike, no, you may not be real happy.
Well, you block the drive for those neighbors of mine.
Right, you get to see under happier circumstances as opposed to the last couple of times I bumped into you.
Time for a tractor pull?
It's that time of year again. Our annual tractor show. And, uh, September 6th and 7th.
They have a hush of arness as that.
We did that. Took them a little. Sure, why not? Didn't, uh, didn't know if, uh, if y'all had any questions. It's basically the same, uh, the same routine that we've done for a little over 20 years now. And, uh, didn't know if we could gain access to the fire hydrant for some water again for our dynamometer. That seems to be a huge hit with the guys. They like to bring their tractors and hook their power tick off up to it and, and then walk away with bragging rights on how much horsepower their tractor puts out. So the fire hydrant, um, uh, and maybe, uh, maybe some trash totes and barrels again, like we've used in the past, if that's not too much trouble. And, uh, if, if, uh, uh, officer, uh, Eflin can make some nightly patrols or evening or daily or whenever, you know, if he's in the car, if any of the guys are in their cars, county guys too, I mean, they, they usually come through and check on things.
You know, Matt's still down at the.
I say the county's been doing that, cause they left one, a tag on the back of our community centers and they checked it at like 11:30.
Oh, really?
Oh, really? Good for them.
Anything else to put on the Facebook page?
Yeah, you block, you don't, I forget, you block the road anyway?
Um, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have some kind of, not, not totally blocked, but some kind of a restriction down there to just.
We can put against your barricade whenever we do that and you just put us a real close, you're not people driving around it, but.
Yeah.
At least they won't pull in there with some like.
Yeah, exactly, you know.
Although if they do it in gal vessels, then they might. And get stuck in the mud.
Yeah. Yeah, that is.
Do a good job over there.
But, uh, no, it's, uh, the same, same basic routine that we've been doing for the last several years and we appreciate the cooperation that the town has always given us. And we have a Facebook page too. I don't know that we had it this time last year. I don't remember, but, uh, Tipi Antique Tractor and Engine Club. So I'm the one that does our Facebook page, because I can't get my kids to do it for me, so. Was that?
Brian.
Yeah, and that's, I think it's getting more and more expensive all the time.
It's well, money well spent.
So is any, anybody have any questions or concerns or anything?
Should they probably, it's part of the hydrant, right? No, that's fine.
No, it's worked out great. We, we have our own water branch.
Cleaned up.
Cleaned up and, and probably got protected. That's.
I don't know about the police. I mean, we're down an officer.
Oh, are you?
That's where the county sometimes comes through.
Well, cause we, yeah, we always check, uh. Check.
You're gonna have it, uh, in, out of Brian's or in a long line?
Both.
Both?
Both, yeah. Yep, down along.
Here's his number. If you just call him and talk to him, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to.
Okay.
Cause I think he's helping you in your tasks.
Yeah.
He's easy to talk to.
He's been down through there. I know during the daytime, because he'll, he'll love to talk to them.
That's probably the easiest thing to do.
And, and we've never, we've never had any issues down there, but.
It's always just fear.
Police presence, just, just the, the image of having somebody down there, just, that goes a long ways.
All you gotta do is buy Rick a new hat and he'll do it. Got me two XL.
Got me a head.
Big mug.
Do you need a motion for this or no?
I would, I would.
Yes, we do, yeah.
Cause of the water, cause of the hydrant.
Oh.
I make a motion.
Locked off the road.
Help Dean out with what we have the last few years.
Totes and fire hydrants.
Yep.
Hope they have a great turnout again, Bishop.
Come down.
Come down and, uh, and visit and stop and say hi.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Why you mask?
There's always ice cream.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh. Take care of the baby here.
Thank you very much. Anyone else has anything on the board or in the audience you wanna bring up? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Bird. Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for Jerry.
He likes, he likes, like you keep him a note.
He said, I'm still getting emails. I said, well, I can tell her.
He told me to send it until, until he told me differently, so I keep.
Oh, you want, you want.
Does it?
I tell you who does a really good job.
She had ever.
Walt Dieter. He lives, I mean, I might have him down. He knows, he knows. Four yards there. This is a really good job.
Oh, no, I just didn't know you were up there. That's great. I'll have to get my stuff.
You don't have to ask me.